The November 23rd, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. And before we have our invocation this evening, Mayor Pro Tem Pennington would like to lead us in a moment of prayer and silence.
Well, actually, yeah, I just thought it was appropriate that we have a moment of silence before our meeting for the victims in France and in Mali who were killed and for those who are fighting for their lives in critical care.
Thank you. Now, we are pleased this evening to have Pastor Vince Messina from Woodside Bible Church lead us with our invocation. If you would please stand for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Council. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the measure of health that is ours this day by your grace. We thank you that you are a God who loves us and protects us and watches over us. And even as we've prayed for many of the victims in Paris, Father, we pray for your protection. Thank you for this council, Father, and for the business that they will transact this evening. Give them wisdom and discernment, Father, for the betterment of our wonderful city of Troy. And Lord, we thank you for the privilege of being here. We invite you to be our unseen guest. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Here.
All present, our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And we are honored this evening to have the Troy Youth Assistance Annual Report with a presentation by Robin Beltrameini, the Chairperson of the Troy Youth Assistance Board of Directors. Good evening, Robin. If you could just grab that microphone.
And spin it around.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. This is my final thing to do off my chairmanship things to do list. We have two new chairman coming in. Carl Schmidt, if you are unfamiliar with him, and Diane Cosenda from the school district. But first, I want to take a minute. Congratulations, Mayor Slater, Councilman Campbell, Councilman Henderson, on your reelection. And to the new voices, Councilman Baker, Councilwoman Abraham, congratulations. We look forward to your new voices.
So, thank you.
Before I highlight our annual report, I want to take a minute to tell the Troy Youth Assistance, well, the youth assistance story because we have new members here and new members in the community. Youth Assistance grew out of a brainstorm of a couple of the Circuit Court Family Division judges. In the 50s, they saw good kids crossing through their courtroom who had made a single bad choice. And so, they wondered what we could do as a community to keep these kids out of the system so that they would still get their scholarships that they had earned, so that they could still produce in society. And the result of that was Oakland County Youth Assistance. And it was a tri-sponsorship program by design. The Family Division of the Circuit Court would provide a caseworker as needed if the local school districts and the municipalities bought into the system. Hazel Park was the first in 1953. And over that 62 years now, 26 communities have joined Youth Assistance. Troy joined in 58. First, the school district bought on, and then two months later, the city. So, that's our story. And it has become a national model for prevention of delinquency, neglect, and abuse of youth, and has been cited as same. So, how do we do that? How do we become a national model? What do we do? And how do we spend not only your money, but the money we raise on our own? And that's the story of our annual report. And I'm not going to reconstitute at all. You've had it all weekend. Surely, you can read, four pages. But I do want to give you some highlights. Our family ed programming is one of our signature issues. And we have tweaked and reset our five traditional parenting programs that were in there. They have new information, new facilitators and instructors. They have new formats. The new, this last year, teen and parent workshops, the anger management, how to keep boys from going, teenage boys from going to frustration to out and out anger and destruction. And the one for girls, that is self-esteem, anti-bullying empowerment workshop. So, those two things are new. And I want to highlight camp skill building because as we talk, Troy Youth Assistance people talk in the community, people don't even know that resource is there. Many families have students who need a little help through a day camp or a skill-building exercise, a lesson, and yet they can't afford to offer that to their child. Troy Youth Assistance will pick up part of that cost. We believe that every parent has to have some skin in the game. But we will pick up for families in need, part of that cost, up to a certain dollar amount. So, that's a resource that people need to know we have. Mentors plus, people listening, understanding, and sharing. That program is administered by Oakland County Youth Assistance, but the matches, the one-on-one with the adult and the child, is made locally. And the restrictions on that or the requirements, the expectations are in the annual report. Youth involvement activities. Last year, they were sent to Troy Union. This year, they're at Waddles. That matches elementary-age students with high school kids for an afternoon of fun and modeling behavior and a little learning on the side. Middle school students were assisted with their counselors and our caseworker and staff. They had to plan and design a service project, more than one, they did these several times throughout the year. They recruited volunteers and equipment if they needed it, and then they executed and celebrated their success. So, there was a function for some middle school kids who didn't have one. 104 Troy students were honored at Youth Recognition for their self-motivated positive contributions to our community. And I will tell you, the nomination forms for next year's April event will be available in December, and you can get them at the Troy Youth Assistance office or from the administrators in the schools, middle school and high school. Lastly, the thing that started it all, the caseworker services. Most referrals you notice on our report come from Troy Police Department or the school district, but we also get them from parents and other community members. Most are referred for prevention. That's a good thing. It really is a good thing that most are referred for prevention. You see, there were 88 new cases this year. There were 69 last year. So, that's what, a 20, 25% more if you take the total? It's almost a 30% if you take just last year. So, there's a need out there that we are filling. And when you, I compared the two reports. Last year's report had the 69 cases, many of the same reasons for referral, but they also had last year curfew violation. We didn't have any of those this year. We didn't have any retail fraud this year that we had last year. We didn't have any larceny this year that we had last year. But listen to what we did have. Computer misuse, that technology piece that we have some education on, receiving and concealing, intimidation and harassment. Now, keep in mind, our clients are 5 to 16. And you've got young kids coming to us to talk about disorderly conduct, cigarette And then there are 68 other cases that we don't even handle that our caseworker vetted and referred to for more extensive services. So, there's that piece. Those are the high points. And that's how we spent your money and the money we raised on our own so that all of these programs can be offered to families here at no cost or a small commitment cost. Some things not in the report. There's the lending library that we have in our office of parent resources in print and video form. Anybody can come in and take those home with them if they think that they will be helpful. This year, I'll tell you already, our parenting programs will be offered for streaming from our website after they have been seen on Community Media Network. I always want to say just CMN, but people don't know who that is. And the schedule for those is still undecided, but it will be available on our website, www.troyyouthassistance, all spelled out, dot org, as soon as it is finalized. Again, we thank you for your sponsorship because it was, is what truly enables us to continue to offer this in our community. We have to have that tri-party sponsorship. Oh, I wanted to tell you about family ed programs, too. They're all based on community needs. You know, I said about the computer technology piece being a referral. We started a technology piece two years before the school district even put technology in hands to go home. And our middle school programs, we've already tweaked. The Girls Stand Strong program has now been divided into two age groups, and we are partnering with another YA Youth Assistance in a nearby community to affect an economy of scale on that. So, we do our best to use everybody's time and money wisely. So, we hope that you will join us on December 1st if you can. You are all welcome to the sponsorship appreciation lunch, or breakfast. You will be out of there by 9 o'clock. Any questions? Any comments?
Any questions for Robin?
Thank you for your time and your support.
And thank you to Troy Youth Assistance for all they do for our community.
They do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is C2, which is the Troy Water Tapping Winning Team Recognition. And I will ask Paul Trossberg, the Superintendent of Water and Sewer, to come forward and make an introduction, and then I'll meet you at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council.
For all of you that haven't met me before, I'm Paul Tross from the Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Division. And I have with me tonight our Water Main Tapping Team. For any of you that really aren't familiar with it, we have had a tapping team in the city of Troy for, ah, about till 19, I'd say about 1997. And we've continued it on, and they've competed at the national level. And I'd like to bring them forward right now. Come on up. You know, do some to you. They have, just came back from competing in Orland, Illinois, at the Great Lakes Cup. And this is a newer competition that just recently has come up when it involves all the cities or towns. It has to be a town or a community that state touches the Great Lake. So, to be a part of this, it could be a province in Canada also. But I have with me, I have the coach of the team here. This is Mark Panuski. Then I have Rich Wiles. I have Andy Willetts back here. And I have Scott Cruthers. I also have with me tonight is Mike Slagelman. He's our division supervisor in the Water and Sewer. He's also the American Water Works Association Michigan Sector Chairman of the Tapping Team Competition. And I brought him along because he wants to kind of, to kind of describe a little bit of the team activities to you. So, Mike, if you'd like to kind of tell them what the team does in this competition, that would be awesome.
Absolutely. Thanks, Paul. Well, as many of you know, the Department of Public Works is very good at delivering service to our many residents and businesses, but we're also really good at delivering in competitions. Streets Department and the Snowplow Rodeo, the Water Division and Meter Madness, and the tapping contest. And once again, the team has delivered. So, three weeks, three years ago, the Illinois section of the American Water Works Association decided they needed to have a regional contest. And some of the idea, some of the idea for that was to improve the skills of the Midwest teams, seemed like they perhaps weren't doing as well as they thought they could in the national level. So, they created this contest, and they invited the people that did well in the contest surrounding the Great Lakes area. And so, in the second year, we were invited to go, being that the team had prevailed at the Michigan Section Contest. And they went down there and cleaned house, much to the Illinois section's dismay. And then, of course, we then became the defending champions. So, we went back once again and not only won the contest again this past October, but also set a new record there as well. And the time there was a minute and 19 seconds. I just want to point out that Mark stepped up as a coach recently. Mark and I were on the team, starting in the mid-'90s together, part of the original team. And he agreed to step up and coach the team. So, we had a little shuffling, which stepped up to do the copper, and the other two gentlemen stayed in the same place. So, they're coming, coming along nicely and gelling well, obviously with our success. So, with that, Doug, I think you've got a little videotape to show us, don't you?
Let's see the video.
You got this. Come on. Come on, guys, you got this. 10. 30. Come on, guys, you got this. Come on. Come on, come on. Come on, boys. Come on, boys. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. Go, go. 50. You got it, Mike, you got it. You got it, you got it, you got it. You got it. All right. Here we go. Here we go, Mike. Here we go, here we go. Come on, guys, you got this. Come on, guys. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. You go, you go. 50. You got it, Mike, you got it. You got it, you got it, you got it. You got it. All right. Here we go. Here we go, Mike. Here we go, here we go. Come on, guys, you got this. Come on, guys. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. You go, you go. 50. You got it, Mike, you got it. You got it, you got it, you got it. You got it. All right. Here we go. Here we go, Mike. Here we go, here we go. Come on, guys, you got this. Come on, guys. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. You go, you go. 50. You got it, Mike, you got it. You got it, you got it, you got it. You got it. All right. Here we go. Here we go, Mike. Here we go, here we go. Come on, guys, you got this. Come on, guys. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. You go, you go. 50. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. 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 Come on, come on, come on. Come on. Come on. Come on, boys. Come on, boys. Come on, guys, come on, guys, you got it. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. You go, you go. 50. You got it, Mike, you got it. You got it, you got it, you got it. You got it. All right. Here we go. Here we go, Mike. Here we go, here we go. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. Come on, guys, you got this. Go. You go, you go. 50. You got it, Mike, you got it. You got it, you got it, you got it. You got it. All right. Here we go. Here we go, Mike. Here we go, here we go. Come on, guys, you got this. 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 Go. tapping teams winning the Great Lakes Cup and wish them success in February at the state competition. Presented this 23rd day of November 2015 by, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, guys, and thank you for representing the City of Troy so well. Thank you so much. [applause] And I see Lori Bloom is at the podium, our city attorney, to accept some money this evening, which is good.
Yes. It's very unusual that I get to actually accept money on behalf of the city, but you may be wondering why I'm up here. I am actually the designated MMRMA representative. And this is, this happened after our risk manager left and through attrition, our office assumed a lot of the responsibilities. So, so I, I serve in that role and I'm happy to do that. I'm also very happy that we have a net asset distribution check that we're going to be receiving tonight from Tim McClory. And part of the, the whole formula that comprises what the net asset distribution is, a big part of that is our city's claims history and our litigation history. And so, again, I think the City of Troy is to be very commended because we are very proactive in, in the risk mitigation. I would also indicate that the MMRMA also shares those same goals. And they have a RAP grant program, and we have so far received $100,000 in RAP grants, which is, again, a benefit of the membership that we have. But we do have a check tonight, and without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Tim McClory from MMRMA, who I believe is happy to answer any additional questions or concerns that you may have.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening. Lori said, I'm Tim McClory, I'm with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority.
Use the microphone, please.
Sorry, we, we, we've, we handle the property and casualty insurance for the City of Troy. We were here not that long ago, talking about the renewal. One of the benefits of membership to the MMRMA, Lori mentioned a couple of them, but first and foremost is we're a nonprofit quasi-governmental entity ourselves, so we're not in it to make money like an insurance company would be. So we're, as such, when there's monies to be had, we give our money back to our membership. And since 2006, the MMRMA has given back almost $195 million backs to its members. There was one year when, when the markets crashed that, that there was no distribution, so it's not a guaranteed distribution. However, our members, like, like Troy, were proactive in risk management. We appreciate Troy's spirit of risk management and, and being proactive in it. Taking advantage of RAP grants is huge. Not only do we, if we partner with you to give you money to avoid risk, when you, when you're avoiding the risk, we reward you with giving you more money. So, so it's a kind of a win-win-win situation. So, on behalf of the MMRMA, I'm happy to present to the City of Troy a check in the amount of $400,440, which represents your portion of this year's net asset distribution to our members. So, congratulations and I thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Tim? It's always good news to get, get money, but that's a significant amount of money. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items. So next are public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. E1 is a planned unit development application, a PUD 014, a proposed Stonecrest planned unit development, PUD, on the east side of Liverneys between Big Beaver and Waddles. Section 22, currently zoned 1, R1E, which is one family residential district. And I see Ben Carlisle, our planning consultant, is ready for presentation. Good evening, Ben.
Good evening. Good evening to the councilman and to the mayor. My name is Ben Carlisle of Carlisle Waterman Associates, and like a poor guest, I apologize, I don't have an award to present or a check to give you. But where I am here tonight is to present a proposed planned unit development for the Stone, Stonecrest assisted living facility. It's a 100-bed assisted living facility located on Liverneys. As can be seen on the slide above you, the site location is located on the east side of Liverneys between Waddles and Big Beaver. Before I get into, dive into the depth of the presentation, I do want to note that in stress, really, this was a strong, true public-private partnership with the applicant. As part of the approved PUD, the applicant is going to make significant improvements and contributions to the city-owned parcel, which is just the north of the proposed development. So that, for that reason, that's why I've highlighted the two separate entities for tonight. The, the property highlighted in yellow is a city park property. That's been in discussion recently for creating a dog park. The property to the south is the assisted living facility site. That property is outlined in red and includes three separate parcels. The other issue I want to note on this aerial photo is, and it's hard to see from this aerial photo, but the back half of both sites are encumbered with a significant amount of natural resources. These include wetland and tree preserves. As part of the approved development, this areas will be, remained in saving perpetuity. The assisted living will do such in a conservation easement, and the city property will be done so through the use of the city park. So that's important to note on the aerial. As the mayor alluded to, the sites are currently zoned R1E. The rezoning, would rezone the south end of the, the south parcels, the assisted living would rezone those to PUD as part of the assisted living development. So this is the meat of what, what is being proposed tonight. To the north is a city property, as we, as we spoke earlier. The partnership would include improvements that would include an 80-space parking lot. That's going to be a shared use parking lot with the city parcel as well as the applicant's parcel. The inclusion of a detention basin with a fountain. The detention basin will include the detention for both the city property as well as the applicant's parcel. And lastly, the applicant proposes the construction of a full sidewalk along the entire length of Liverneys as well as significant internal landscaping. In regards to the assisted living sites, that would include a two-story, 100-bed assisted living facility, 37 onsite parking spaces, as well as a conservation easement to preserve those wetland features. This slide highlights the amount of significant amount of landscaping that the applicant is proposing to do for the city's benefit. As you can note, along Liverneys, there is a dense landscape buffer and sidewalk. All the parking will be screened by that landscape buffer on both, on, along Liverneys. The elevation shown above show what the elevation will look like. On the north, sorry, the top picture is what the elevation will look along Liverneys. We do note that's a two-story massing. The bottom picture is what the elevation will look like at the city park property. There was long discussion with the planning commission about site rearrangement to move the two-story to the back end of the site. However, due to programming needs of the assisted living facility, this two-story component had to be up at Liverneys. So that's the reason why this two-story is in front and the one-story is farther back. As I noted, again, this is a, this was a true public partnership between both parties. The benefit to the applicant is they use the city park for detention and shared parking. They use the city property for land balancing. They're actually taking property as part of the detention, moving it over to their site to compensate for some engineering issues, as well as they knew, they now create a city park amenity for their residents and visitors. The benefits to the city are numerous to name. These include an improvement of the city park property, which is the site grading, an 80-space shared parking lot, detention basin with a fountain, sidewalk and landscaping along Liverneys. In addition, the applicant will preserve, like I noted before, the conservation easement, all the natural features. The applicant is proposing a $50,000 contribution for park improvements, as well as there is a maintenance assistance agreement between both parties. In regards to maintenance, there was a detailed maintenance table in the PUD agreement. I'm not going to go into detail. The maintenance really is shared between both parties. For example, most of snow removals being done by the applicant, and long-term maintenance is being done by the applicant as well. So there is some shared maintenance, but that's all spelled out and laid out in the PUD agreement as part of the public benefit. There are a number of standards the planning commission does consider when they consider a PUD. This includes a public improvement, proposed community benefit, a mix of open spaces, et cetera. There are, these are listed in the zoning ordinance. The planning commission did consider this as part of their recommendation. In fact, on September 22nd, they held a public hearing and voted 8-0 to recommend approval. And we'll note the applicant's also here to answer any questions that the, that the city council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben Carlisle at this time? Did the developer, Mr. Sawyer, wish to say anything at this time? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for your time. My name is Mark Pomerinki. I'm the vice president of operations with North Point Development, and I represent Stonecrest Senior Living, the development group. First of all, I wanted to say thank you again. You guys have a wonderful city. We are very, very excited about the prospect of, of doing development here. And I do want to add to that, you know, we are, pending approval of this PUD, we are prepared to commence immediately, and we'll start construction as soon as weather and permitting allows. And we'll hopefully have the project operational and on the tax rolls by 2017. So, we're very serious about the project. We've done a lot of studies in both Troy and Michigan. We do extensive research on demographics and need for these facilities. This is a large investment for us. This is a $20 million investment for our firm, so a lot goes into the study of why we choose where we choose to be. I think it's worth noting that probably the two, there's really only two competitive type of products within a three to five mile radius and in Troy, and those are both 100% full right now. And the other thing I wanted to touch on is just kind of why we went towards the PUD and, and the process to get where we are. The use, I believe, is allowed under R1E, but we, we needed some accommodations from height and setbacks. And so we've been working with both the adjacent neighbors and the planning commission and city staff over the last four months with numerous meetings. We feel like we've addressed all of our adjacent neighbors' concerns. I think it's also worth noting that our second closest neighbor is a member of the planning commission who voted for the project. So we're very excited about the collaboration with the city and where we've ended up. And with that, I'll leave the rest to questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for the developer? Councilman Campbell?
So this is going to be strictly an assisted living. Alzheimer care is going to be there also, or?
Correct. So, so roughly 40% of the, 30% to 40% of the project is memory care, so Alzheimer's and dementia patients, so they, they just require different standards for construction and care.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Just happy to hear that you reached out to the residents. We had talked about that earlier. I'm glad that you, you did that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Yes, sir, come forward. Mr. Maras, thank you. We have a three-minute limit also on this. Thank you.
In general, I'm 100% for that project. I, I think it's a real good one, and we need, you know, consideration for older people and, but I think the, the, the.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Ross, could you use the microphone and speak to the councilman, please? Thank you.
All right. When we have just a couple of minutes, we aren't going to be able to cover much, but the, the gist of it is, is we do not have any unencumbered, un-called-for, large parcels. We hear this over and over, we, we, we don't have any, we have like two acres, three acres, a couple of little odds and ends things. This particular project here is right in the center of a 40-acre undeveloped wetland, basically, that could be developed into a destination. You come back off of the, of the trails and that, what do you, what do we come to? Well, there's no destination to speak of. I'd like to see not a lake, but a large pond. I'm glad to see that they added a fountain on it. That was, is a very good thing. With just a little bit of doing, a little bit of manipulation, this building could be put on one of the peripherals here. And, and the content of the lake then, or the, of the pond and the fountain and that would be the end of the trail. We got to have a destination for the trail. You look at the other end up in Rochester, I mean, in Auburn Hills, they have the Clinton River. They have a little bit of a downtown area. When we get down here, what do we got? A, a dog park? We could put a dog park anywhere, and, and specifically would be most, most usable by, by the peripherals, by where all those trees are. And we really have to, someone mentioned here about taking a moratorium on the, on the master plan, and I think we really should. There's been some projects that's been just kind of, you know, after years and years of nothing done, nothing done, and all of a sudden, here comes the tail wagging the dog. We need a master plan that would cover a consistency. I have a plan that involves many sources of walking. That includes the university district at the corner of Waddles and, and Cook's Road. Four universities that have a, a single goal, and that is water, and I'm glad the water people were here, water. And I'm talking about water, Great Lakes. And then we have.
Mr. Maras, that's three minutes. I think we, I think we understand what you're saying.
Well, that's just part of it. I'd like to see the, the city take a stand like some of the other states and the state of Michigan, to not have fracking or any, anything on, on that area, because Michigan is all by itself, and it should be one of the states that don't include fracking.
Thank you, Mr. Maras. We got to give others opportunities. Anyone else here wish to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First, I'd like to congratulate all those who were selected by our residents for a two- or four-year term. Congratulations. Looks like a nice, strong team here, and I look forward to working with all of you in the benefits of improving our city. My name is Steve Toth. I'm a resident, 25 years. I'm also the chair of the Dog Park Development Committee. I've had the opportunity of attending the planning commission meetings concerning this project with Stonecrest, and I've enjoyed watching staff, I've enjoyed watching the residents, I've enjoyed everyone participating in this project, which does become a project of the community. As you've seen the amenities about the dog park, I just need to remind everyone, the dog park is just a part of the entire parcel. So as you look at the 17 acres, approximately half of it will be a dog park, and my hope is the balance of it will become more family activities. We do have a trail pathway going through there. And we're also looking at the east end of that parcel and a parcel of the Stonecrest project to remain wooded because of it's a, it's a wetland. And if you don't walk back there, on a, after a rainy day, you'll be amazed at the number of deer tracks you see back there. And there's probably other wild animals or, you know, part of our nature, that's part of Troy, and I like to preserve that. So as Stonecrest is doing their project to benefit our community and residents with employment, increased tax base, and opportunity for maybe help, you know, as people out of town come to visit their family members, it helps the hotel. There's such a broad basis of positive from that project as a positive for the dog park because in essence, it's going to help more than half of the amenities in the development of our park. When this gets approved by council, and this will allow our committee to go back and get into the next phase of our fundraising. We've had a number of individuals interested in giving medium-sized gifts. When you do a capital campaign, you know, a big gift says, is serious, it's going to happen, and now that we have this, the, the others who've been waiting for something of this magnitude will allow us to get those funds. And I think there's a likelihood that we're in a position, as this progresses, that maybe we can open this park by even next summer. So I, I think your support is warranted in something that has been discussed in numerous meetings. Staff have looked at this. I think accommodations to neighbors have done well, and I think the benefit overall will be multiple. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, sir, come forward, please.
Hi, my name's Joe Peterson. Me and my wife, we live in Troy Meadows, which is almost across the street. I spoke at the planning commission. We're very concerned about the traffic and flooding. The creek runs through the Troy Meadows Sub. In the last year and a half, it's overflowed three times. I lived there 28 years, overflowed three times before that. This is going to have an impact on that creek, and I am concerned that we're going to have to get flood insurance. Last year, it came home halfway up my front, my backyard. So I'm really concerned by any more development. This is supposed to be single-family residence. This is a large structure. It's going to be visible when we leave our subdivision, and it's not something I want to see when I leave the subdivision. And lastly, I really want to make sure, if you, I'm sure we're going to go through with this, everybody seems in favor of it. I would like to be better landscaped than the church right across the way. Looks like it's calling for 16, 16 trees or 500 feet. To me, that's not a lot. I really would like to have the landscaping much better done. I really don't want to see it from the road at all. I would suggest you go to Woodward Hills on Woodward, about Long Lake. It's another rehabilitation place. You cannot see that from, because it's very, very heavily landscaped. I think we'll at least make sure that same happens with this facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution and discussion.
I'll move the resolution as printed.
I'll support. Thank you. Moved by Councilwoman Abraham and supported by Councilman, I got to get these new, new names down here now, Councilman Baker, that we approve E1, which is a planned unit development application, PUD 014, as printed in tonight's agenda. Discussion.
Just, if, if I could ask one question with regard to flooding on the other side of the street, and does the retention pond that's proposed with the fountain help that situation or hurt that situation? Any ideas?
Is there a question for the developer or Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Carlisle?
I've got Dave Hunter here, but just generally, I believe the west side of Liverneys is upstream from our project development, so we shouldn't have really any impact on, on their flooding. As far as the detention on our site, the detention basin will hold the water and release it at a rate equal to or slower than existing rates of water coming off the site.
So what I think I'm hearing is that this particular project, if there was flooding before the project, this project wouldn't have any additional impact on that area. That would still, if there's a flooding issue, it's there already. Okay. Any other questions, councilman? Councilman Baker?
I just have a quick comment. I think, from what I'm understanding, this is a good example of public-private partnership, working together, and I hope that we continue this kind of development in the city where hopefully, I mean, we can work together to get things done that everybody is really happy with. And I hope that any concerns you have regarding flooding are not going to happen, frankly, because you seem very concerned about it, and you don't seem satisfied with the answers that were given. I just want to say that.
Thank you. I would just like to echo the comments by Councilman Baker that this is a true partnership, one of the best that I've, I've ever seen come to Troy. It's a win-win, I think, for everyone, and I appreciate, I, I think almost it's more as City Manager Kishnik indicated today, it might be more 70/30 than 50/50. And that's, that's good from our perspective, from the city's perspective, when it's 70% on the other side. So I appreciate it. Thank you for your hard work. Looking forward to the development. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. We look forward to the project. Thank you. Next is public comment. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There is no postponed items, so we will move to regular business this evening. I have one mayoral appointment that I would like to move, and that is the vacancy for the unexpired term on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and I'd like to appoint Steve Gottlieb to that position for that vacancy. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we appoint Steve Gottlieb to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the unexpired term, which expires 4/30/2016. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Gottlieb. There are no city council appointments this evening, so we will move to nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening, and I know that Mayor Pro Tem Pennington is working feverishly on the vacancies in city council, and I'm, I'm told. working feverishly on the vacancies in city council and I'm told that you'll have at least some of them next council meeting.
Couple next meeting.
Sounds good. I know there's quite a few there, so as we talked about earlier, if you want some assistance, please reach out to other members for that. There is a closed session request, I-3, this evening, if somebody would like to move that resolution. Councilman Henderson?
We resolve that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve the resolution to meet in closed session this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-4 is the Troy Trail and Pathway Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, grant resubmital. Says that City Manager Brian Kishnik will make an introduction. Will you just be handing this over to?
No, I just, I want to say a few things, Mayor, for the city council because this isn't just a project that popped up out of nowhere and this isn't a project that we're just submitting to this council and as you all know that, I just wanted everyone to understand for the record and so anybody who's wondering, this has been a plan, a goal of the city for many years, at least the 2000s, if not before that. There have been several plans developed, several economic changes that have changed the plans, put them on hold. So in comes along this new plan and Kurt Bolensief has been the lead, working with Jen Chahab on this plan and working with, trying to get grant monies for it, but first coming up with a plan, putting a large contingent of staff and residents together to go through the public engagement process, to sit with people and listen to their concerns. I think it's important to remember where we've been and when you see this presentation, it's the culmination. It's not the end, it's not the end-all-be-all. This is just, you know, for a grant application with a lot of study put into it, a lot of groundwork and a lot of boots on the ground, walking through the path, but it's the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of vetting with residents, a lot of discussions between the Planning Commission and the city council, a lot of staff conversations, a lot of conversations with professional consultants like HRC and Jen. So I want to remind everyone, this has been a lengthy project and there's a long way to go, but we present tonight to you a plan that we think takes all the comments into consideration and balances all the interests the best we can as of this date in time. So with that, Kurt's been the lead on this project. He's going to do the presentation with Jen.
Thank you, Brian. I couldn't say it better. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, City Manager Kishnik. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Brian said, I have with me Jen Chahab, who's with HRC. She'll have a role towards the end of the presentation and be able to answer any questions. But I just, I do want to take a couple steps back and just remind that we did apply for a grant back in August of this year, which council approved on July 20th. They approved the submittal through resolution for that grant opportunity. With that submittal, we promised that we would do a public engagement because it is so important with the TAP grant that we get our constituent support. Unfortunately, timing didn't allow us to do that before our submittal, so we did that afterwards. On August 20th, we had our first public engagement. If you remember in the study session, we called that route the recreational route. The first segment was from South Boulevard and Adams that ran through subdivisions, went through some backyards through Firefighters Park and also went through some side yards. We saw a lot of opposition to that, which resulted in us going back to the drawing board. Mayor, I share your passion for this project. I probably won't give up until we have something. So we went back to the drawing board and we came up with two other routes. One was the transportation route, which just used major roads. The second was the hybrid route, which used a combination of major roads and local roads and still tied in many natural amenities. We held our second public engagement on August 5th, where we looked at these three routes and instead of specifically at the route, we were looking for what people, what type of a route they wanted, the feel of the route. The 61% preferred the major road route. It was more of a transportation opportunity, was still tying into some natural amenities. During the study session, on November 9th, we got clear directives through consensus from both the city council and the Planning Commission and we'll go over just a few of those now. The first was instead of Beach Road, to look at using Coolidge Road as an alternative to go south. When we looked at Coolidge Road, we did see some concerns, one being utility poles here in the right of way. This is at South Boulevard and Adams, or excuse me, South Boulevard and Coolidge, looking to the west. So we just have a few utility poles to get moved out of the way. Second would be just a little bit further to the south. Looking south is, we do cross some wet area. This could be wetlands. Once we have it officially delineated, we'll know, but we could see some potential boardwalk for a very short stretch on Coolidge Road. One of the directives was to make sure that we included the nature center. So we're, as heading south down Coolidge, we're going right past the nature center where we can have a bike rack and invite people in to enjoy the nature center. Another concern just south of the nature center would be a culvert. This culvert here is a double 60-inch culvert that the Rouge River flows under. You can see the guardrail right now, it's positioned against Coolidge Road. That's a five-foot sidewalk, so once we extend that walkway to 10 feet, plus we need our clear zones on each side, that guardrail gets very close to Coolidge. So what we're proposing is to extend the culvert to try to keep it the same distance it is currently from Coolidge Road and still maintaining that guardrail for safety. So as we go a little bit further south, just some more utility concerns, guide wires and such, working with utility companies to get those guide wires moved or relocated or repositioned. With all these concerns on Beach Road, staff looked at this and compared it to Beach, even going through the nature center, we all have concurred that even though the costs are a little higher, this is the least disruptive to our residents. Going down Beach Road would cause us to remove some trees, we would be going in front of some homes and even behind some homes close by. One of the directives was to make sure that we provided the connection to Firefighters Park and we did that through Square Lake. You'll see beautiful Firefighters Park there. We're going through Firefighters Front Door opposed to the other proposed route, which was through the back door, so we won't be contending with any homes going through this way. Heading south, we cross under I-75. You'll notice in this plan, we go underneath I-75 twice, once here and then again at Big Beaver. This is not included in our proposed plan for our funding. Because MDOT has already planned to redo these interchanges in these bridges, we're going to leave it up to them to make the improvement, so we didn't feel necessary to spend money on this improvement when it's so near in the future. Continuing on Coolidge down to Northfield Parkway. Northfield Parkway, as presented in the study session, will continue to stay an in-road bike lane. You can see again the green hash marks as you cross intersections. This not only notifies pedestrians or cyclists in the road that they're approaching an intersection, but it's also an alerting to the drivers. It's new, it's fresh, it's something a lot of cities around us are doing. This is a very low, low speed limit, 35 miles an hour with low traffic volumes. During our presentation on November 9th, we also mentioned that we were going to continue this in-road bike route, heading south and then have to figure out something to do with Troy High School. Looking at Troy High School a little bit closely when we were putting together our estimates, we've decided that it's best to have an off-road pathway from Long Lake all the way down to Bowlin Park. The street is wide enough, but we would have to take that center lane that students and parents use going into the high school, taking a center lane going into the subdivision, so we felt that it was safest for everyone if we took that portion and maintained it off-road all the way to Bowlin Park. As we go south, we do go through Bowlin Park connecting to Crooks Road. Crooks Road south to Willshire. Willshire again is an industrial, low volume. You're going to see your lowest volumes, especially where in non-peak hours, so at night because of work has let out, so you're going to see those low-volume hours, the same as the use of the pathway might be. So where the roads are going to be heaviest in traffic during the day, it's likely that the pathway won't be used as much. So we feel it'd be a good idea to use in-road bike lanes there. Again, going beneath I-75, over to City Hall, around City Hall, and the directive being to reach the Dog Park being essential. And what more fitting is this beautiful picture of a PUD you just approved that is not a superimposed rainbow, that is a real picture taken at one of our events. So we end at the rainbow. Again, what we're here tonight is we have a resolution before you to apply, resubmit for the TAP grant application. This resubmittal is initiated actually by MDOT. MDOT reached out to us and said, "We like your project, we really do. We just need to, we need to find the route to get this done." They were willing to give us an extension of their November 2nd deadline for this quarter's application. They also agreed it to be a resubmittal or an edit, if you will, of our current application, which saved us a lot of energy, time to get this into MDOT. We looked at this project, we looked at the timeline and we thought, since we've had budgeted for the next three years in the capital fund, a million dollars each year for the next three years, totaling a $3 million project, with the anticipation that we would receive half of that through grant funding, we should combine that all into one phase. Instead of breaking this up into separate segments, combine this into one package to MDOT. They like our project, let's get this done. So we are asking tonight for a resolution that would allow us to submit for a just over $3 million project with the city matching 50% at $1.5 million. And again, here to talk about some of the details of that timeline. I apologize. The timeline indicates several, not necessarily hurdles, but things we have to accomplish through this type of funding through MDOT and Jennifer can go over some of those obstacles, if you will, or some of those requirements that the Michigan Department of Transportation, which is actually federal funds coming from the federal government down to the state level and then down to the local level. It looks like we're just going to have to freehand.
Correct. So as Kurt said, the state did extend their November 2nd deadline to actually today. So we did submit the grant application today and then the resolution that passes tonight will be, they're anticipating getting that from us this week. They are actually very interested. I don't think they would have extended the deadline three weeks. They'll make the final decisions or ask their final questions within a week and then we should hear a decision by the end of December or early January. This is 2017 funding. So the way MDOT works through local agency program, there's about a six-month window between when you submit your plans to when you can actually open bids. So in looking at the fact this is 2017 money, it won't actually appear on the state transportation plan until July, even though we'll get approval in January. So it's our goal to submit the initial paperwork in September with a bid opening in February of 2017 and the construction beginning in April of 2017 through November of 2017. A couple other things to point out is that MDOT's fiscal year begins October 1st of 2016, so this is really, you know, we're submitting September of 2016 for a fiscal year that starts on October and it is just a long process with this type of funding and this type of construction. I do also want to point out that when we were initially looking at doing this as a three-phase, we were looking at 2016, 2017, and 2018 funding. So at this point, we would still be constructed by the end of 2017, which is a little bit more aggressive than the three phases that we had initially presented in our first round. So if you have any questions, feel free. Kurt and I hope to answer them.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
I have a quick question. Are you required to do additional public or obtain additional public input at this point?
I think the state is satisfied that we've, you know, we've presented several routes. We've asked the public twice. We did get 61% support for this. We're not modifying this from what was presented to the public, so they're satisfied that we've done our due diligence to reach out and I think that we've heard what residents wanted.
Councilman Campbell?
Who pays for this from South Boulevard up to Clinton Trail? Who's responsible for that cost along Adams Road? Who's going to do that? Is that us, Rochester Hills or?
So it'd be Auburn Hills. Currently, there is a pathway that leads from South Boulevard all the way to the north to the Clinton River Trail. It's not a 10-foot-wide pathway, it's not a national-approved pathway. When we originally started this, we approached Rochester Hill, or excuse me, Auburn Hills and met with Assistant City Manager Greis there and asked if he was be interested in co-authoring a application with us to improve his trail. They had already had a, at that time, had a submittal into MDOT for some signs along the Clinton River Trail, so he appreciated the offer, but at that time he declined. They, we do have a letter of support from Auburn Hills and we have an agreement that they'll sign for us directing people to Troy if we sign directing them to people in Auburn Hills.
One more question. Councilman Baker?
Sorry. If we, if they accept us and offer this grant to us, are we obligated to then take it and spend the city's money as well? Or can we still, if something comes up and we need to change our course for whatever reason, are we permitted to do that? Or once we apply for the grant and they accept us, are we obligated to take those funds and use it as they originally sought?
You're not necessarily obligated to, but then there's always that stigma that if you come back to the state for future funding, that, you know, you're going to pull the same thing on them. This is, this is one of those funds they over-obligate because that happens far too often to them. So, and usually the reason is because people haven't gone through the due diligence that Troy has. They haven't gotten their ducks in a row with resident participation. They come in and they go, "Nobody wants this, but we want it." So that's not the situation here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Is the 61%, is that going to be okay with them? I mean, because we knew, we knew that that was, it was a negative before.
Right. I think, I think what's going to be also okay with them is the fact that we presented three alternatives and this was 61% of the people most interested in the trail supported this route.
Just so I have a clear picture of the numbers, the resolution states 3.05 million is the grant application. Is that the entire cost of the project? So we'll get half, or we have to come up with 1.5 million out of our coffers and the other million and a half is coming from the state? Is that, is that what I'm reading in this?
Correct. The total project cost is 3.05 million dollars and we are coming to the table with 1.5 million of that and then asking to be funded the remainder.
Any other questions? Councilman Baker, I did ask a very similar question this afternoon that you did, whether it would be beneficial to us to go and perhaps get somebody from the Lake Charmwood subdivision to write a positive letter, as I was kind of led to believe they might do if a different trail was presented. So I was told it's not necessary, but it would be welcomed.
It's correct. We have, we have about a week to answer questions that MDOT might ask and make adjustments to our application, so if we were to receive a letter of support, we would definitely include it to the state.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work once again. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Henderson?
The portion that goes through Northfield Parkway around the, previous to the school, so north of 18 Mile, that, that's going to be sharrows. Is that correct?
No. Sharrows is a, you're sharing the lane with a vehicle, so you would be riding in the same lane as a vehicle. Here on Northfield Parkway, it is a dedicated bike lane. Sharrow is what we were presenting in the local roads, so.
So this is going to be, so the areas to the right of the double white lines designated for bikes, so it's not technically sharrow?
Correct.
It's painted or however we get around it?
Yes.
When you, when you go further on the other side of When you, when you go further on the other side of 18 Mile, I think, by the school, you're proposing an asphalt designated?
Dedicated. Correct.
So, and does that not go through subdivision or backyards as well, or no? I'm not real familiar with that section.
Yeah, yes, it does. And we can go to the map here, and I can show you, I can zoom in and show you approximately how many homes it will affect. These are, these are your homes here. So these are, these are fronting winter green. So really, we will be going on the side of these homes on the west side of Northfield Parkway, here again on the sides. Right here, this stretch here is where you get behind some homes. In fact, this is, the number nine's a little deceiving. This picture was taken right here. So you can see the proximity of the pathway, and there's a house there. So it is, it is, we'll go behind using a major road.
Can I have a follow-up on that situation then? Are there already sidewalks there now?
There's an existing five-foot sidewalk.
So we're just really expanding it another five, five feet? Do you anticipate any pushback from the neighbors in that particular section?
These neighbors were also invited to our second public engagement because Northfield Parkway was part of the, part of that route. So they got a letter inviting them to the public engagement. To my knowledge, and I've gone through those comments several times, there was no one from those addresses that objected to going down Northfield Parkway.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
Just to kind of backstop that, I do live right there, and there are bikes going on those sidewalks and roadways already. Right behind those houses, there's a lot of wonderful traffic, pedestrian and bike traffic. If anything, anyone living there is going to be grateful for wider spaces and more space to conduct their walking and walking dogs and biking. I can't imagine that there, that there would be an issue because it would be an asset there and would help out. There actually is congestion if you're riding a bike there right now. So the wider sidewalk essentially is what this becomes, correct, is going to be a benefit.
My recollection is 72 or 73% of this, this pathway is a dedicated bike path where it's not on roadway at all.
That's correct, Mayor, and that 72% of this proposed route is off-road, which is higher than what we had originally proposed in any of the routes, even the recreation route, because the recreation route used local roads.
All right. And that was important to me because I said once before, I still believe it. I don't think it's good to mix bicycles with moving cars. So I know Northfield Parkway is a, is not a heavily traveled road, but it still has the bike path dedicated on the road, which is okay with me. Any other questions? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Mayor, I just wanted just to make a comment that having attended the public input session, having watched staff work this, anyone who has a sense that this was capricious or not done thoughtfully, I can assure you, a great deal of time, conversation, thoughtfulness went into it, and I am appreciative of everyone that was involved, every resident that gave input, staff. I know I had positive feedback from people who said you came and met with them, sat on their deck, saw what they're, what they were looking at. This, to me, is really good government. We came up with a route that isn't just a compromise. It's the best thinking of as many people as we could involve in the process. And I would hope that MDOT sees that here and recognizes that effort. It's a very positive thing to see in a community, and I'm glad to see it here in Troy.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Before I, before I bring this to the table for a resolution, I just want to make a couple statements because this is, I've said from the beginning, a very important project to me, very passionate to me, and for a couple of reasons. Most importantly, because every study that we've ever done in this city and asked for our citizens what they want, overwhelmingly, they've told us that they want trails and pathways and that they want our city to be more walkable. So that's number one to me. And number two is that I am probably the only one left on council that took the $3 million that was dedicated to this project in 2010 or '11 and put it back into our funds so that we could survive. So I feel an obligation to, to the city, to the councils that came before us that thought this was an extremely important project to the city and have been working very hard for many, many years to try and get this done. I feel an obligation to, to keep that going. So that is why I am so in favor of this project. And I will move, I for the resolution that the City of, City Council for the City of Troy, Oakland County, Michigan hereby authorizes the City of Troy's Parks, Streets, and Drains Divisions to pursue a Transportation Alternative Program grant application for the amount of 3.05 million, with a not-to-exceed 1.5 million in local match for the project to provide a non-motorized pathway network from Troy's Future Central/Dog Park routing through City Hall and connecting Big Beaver to the Clinton River Trail.
Support.
By all of us.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington and the rest of the City Council. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Once again, thanks for all your hard work. Next is I-5, a contract ratification for the Troy Police Officers Association/Polic Officers Association of Michigan, 2015 to 2020. And I see Jeanette Menning, our Human Resources Director, anxiously waiting to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm very pleased to be here to let you know that we've reached a tentative agreement with the TPOA, the Troy Police Officers Association, who now is affiliated with the POAM, the Police Officers Association of Michigan, and together they represent the City of Troy's 78 police officers. This agreement in front of you is the last step in the consolidation of active employee health care plans. Not so long ago, in 2010, the city juggled administering 17 different active employee health insurance plans. However, with this final piece of the puzzle in place, I'm delighted to say that we will have migrated all of our full-time employees to one Community Blue PPO health insurance plan. So city management recommends ratifying this five-year agreement with the TPOA.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeanette from council? Thank you for all your hard work. I know this was one of the longest ones to take care of and the last, I believe, right? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I'd like to move I-5, resolved that a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Troy and Troy Police Officers Association/Polic Officers Association of Michigan for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2020, is hereby ratified by the City Council of the City of Troy and the mayor and city clerk authorized to execute the final agreement.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I-5 as read and printed in the agenda tonight. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations and thanks. I see the past president and the future president of the TPOA in the back. Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council wishes to pull this evening? Seeing none, would somebody like to move that resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington? I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There is an announcement for a public hearing for December 7, 2015, which is for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program for 2016 application. And if you would read that in the agenda packet, it will describe what that public hearing is for December the 7th and how the money will be distributed. Next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I see that Art Ross signed up, but I saw him leave just a little while ago. So we will pass on his speaking this evening on that. There are no council referrals this evening, so next is council comments. Council comments this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'm sorry. I signed up for public comment. Josie Lewis?
I.
I was just outside. We're on my list.
Somehow that didn't make. Did you want to speak for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents or for public comment for items on or not on the agenda from members? Okay. When I get to that, I'll.
I'm sorry. Councilor here.
Any council comments this evening? Councilman Henderson?
Just two things. We're still in the heat of Movember, and that's why you see some of the facial hair. And I'd just like to take the opportunity while I have a chance to just promote men's health. Men, when you get to be 40, 50 years old, have your PSA checked and be diligent. It pays. Early detection is the key. And then, secondly, Mr. Savage dropped off a flyer a little bit ago, and I just wanted to promo that for him. It's, he calls it Shall We Dance? It's at the community center. It happens the second Thursday of every month. The next event is December 10 from 7:00 PM till 9:30, and I'm making a loose commitment that I'm going to try to be there. But he says it's a lot of fun. I know the mayor's attended in the past, too, so.
I attended last year. It's a great event. Mr. Savage was sick that particular, I don't know if it was because I was going to show up or not, but he invited me back again, and I'm going to make every effort to be there on the 10th. But I'm not going to dance. We'll leave that to Councilwoman Hoderick.
I will.
Is Councilwoman Hoderick volunteering to dance again this year?
It would be my pleasure.
Any other council comments this evening? Councilwoman Abraham?
I just wanted to remind residents that on December 2, next week, Wednesday, will be the tree lighting ceremony for the city. It'll be a great event. We've got the choirs, I think, from both high schools there. I understand the man in the red suit will also be showing up. So it's a great event. I hope to see a lot of residents out there.
Great. It is a great event. They'll also be lighting the trees in the median, and I'm told there's going to be more lights than ever this year. Any other council comments?
Yeah, I do have a quick comment.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
We did attend Mr. Savage's, one of Savage's dance last year, my wife and I, and we did have a good time. And if Dave Henderson's going to be there dancing, then yeah, we may have to show up for this one, too.
Careful.
Probably not going to happen.
Bring your cam, bring your camera. Any other comments? Next is reports. Are there any comments regarding the reports that were in the agenda packet this evening? I know there was a nice certificate of appreciation to the City of Troy from the Troy Historic Village for our sponsoring, being a financial sponsor for the 2015 Troy Traffic Jam Car Show. So thanks to them. Now we move to comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. And somehow your name didn't get put on here, but I'm going to, with council's permission, we'll allow you to speak. If you want to come forward, give us your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Josie Lewis, and I've been a litigation attorney in this area for approximately 10 years. I now work for Cannabis Attorneys of Michigan. We have three offices in Michigan, Troy, Howell, and Grand Rapids. And I'm here today to encourage the city to consider adopting a medical marijuana ordinance. In 2008, 63% of the Michigan voters approved the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. It provides for immunity from state prosecution for patients who are authorized to use marijuana and their caregivers. Since that time, however, there has not been any sort of regulatory system for safety, for distribution, for testing, or licensing. My boss has been instrumental in proposing two House bills that have passed the House that are currently in the Senate. Both of them will regulate marijuana facilities. And we will, we are interested, and I represent a couple of business owners in the City of Troy who are interested in opening a facility within Troy. It's my understanding that Troy does not have a city ordinance. That is why I'm here today. I have some information. If, may I approach?
Could you give it to the city clerk, please? Thank you.
There have been approximately 20 cities in the state of Michigan that have adopted zoning ordinances. The primary reason cities want to do this is, one, for regulation, to keep the criminals out and make sure that these facilities are licensed, they are penalized, they are ticketed if they do not follow the rules. Also, there is about, almost 75% of all the excise taxes will be going to local municipalities and the counties if you approve such ordinance. So there is income that could be generated to your city for allowing such an ordinance. I have attached several documents in there about election results for the City of Troy. I have also outlined a list of cities that have passed ordinances, which will show that crime rates actually have not increased in the cities that actually have adopted these ordinances. So in sum, I hope that you can check out this information. There's a couple articles in there. There's also a proposed draft ordinance. My office would love to sit down to speak with the council or your city attorney to discuss any sort of possibility of having an amendment or ordinance adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I would encourage you to contact our city attorney. This is nothing new to our city, so I'm sure our city attorney could provide you with our latest information.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's going to be a closed session this evening, so we will take a recess and meet in about five minutes in the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.